Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the 17th anniversary of the attacks of September 11th, 2001. Please remain seated or standing for a brief moment of silence. Welcome to our September 11th, 2018, Tiverton School Committee meeting. Has anyone signed up for open forum? Kelly Lebec, please state your name and address.
Kelly Lebec, 217 Crandall Road. I attended the cross-country home opener track meet today, and I unfortunately did a lot of listening and not a lot of cheering because everyone got my ear. The cross-country parents have two concerns that I'm just passing on. The first one is that they don't want to pave the path between the middle school and the high school. If we do pave it other than what it is now, they won't be able to use it, and it is part of their cross-country course. So just leaving it out there because I advocated to pave it. And the second thing is, we in the spring, when they started the track, the spring soccer or the spring track and field here, went out and asked for donations from alumni, parents, businesses, for the 30 hurdles that we ended up purchasing. And apparently, there's nowhere to store the hurdles. They're still outside from last spring. And all of the big mats that they use for the high jump and the pole vault and whatever they do. So they need some kind of area, storage area, in which to store their equipment. And they'd like you all to wave your magic wands and find some storage and something that can protect it. It's only respectful to the donors that we had, that we protect the investment that we did with the beautiful new hurdles that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor? Dr. Sanquiony?
Okay. Personnel action. We have a resignation science teacher at the middle school, Jason Douglas. Under appointments this evening, we have a technology education teacher at the middle school, Matthew Ahern. A science teacher at the middle school, Kathleen Alvarez. A remedial math intervention interim at the middle school, Sandra Amaral. A long-term social studies substitute teacher at the high school, Lauren Teeter. Long-term two-fifths biology substitute teacher at the high school, Michael Naring. A long-term point-six strings teacher at the middle school, Sandra Tavares. Personnel.
Thank you. Correspondence, none. Policy development revision and review, 8A, student members at school committee meetings. Dr. Sanquiony?
Per your request at our last meeting, you asked me to come up with a policy for adding a student to the school committee, so I've worked out some language that I was familiar with compared to what I heard you say at the meeting. Again, this is for your eyes to edit any way you see fit, but I thought it was a good place to start from.
Any comments?
Did you want to, now that we have sort of something to go by, to refer that to the policy subcommittee?
That was my intention initially, so I thought we'd actually formally done that. Yeah, no, I understand. So I don't know if there's any other discussion of the material that Dr. Sanquiony provided with us, to us. It's a good start. I agree. So I'll leave it to you guys to schedule your subcommittee meeting. Okay. Thank you. 8B, policy number 741, agenda. This was actually put on by me, not so much as a review of the, well, I guess it is a review of the policy, not necessarily to change it, but to sort of remind everybody of the policy regarding the agenda. And I guess what I wanted to do was share with you my view of how we arrive at the agenda because there have been some questions over the last couple of months, and really, actually, questions come up from time to time, all the time. So one thing you'll notice is that it's pretty open-ended. It doesn't really specify too much, other than it says that the superintendent with the direction of the chair is to come up with the agenda. And I guess what I would ask all of the committee members to sort of think about is, when they want to have something on the agenda, what sort of appropriate information do they need to provide to all of us and to the superintendent in order to take up a given item? And I'll say that, in my view, there are things that actually don't require a lot of backup, if any at all, and because it's just something that someone wants to put out there and discuss. And I'd much rather discuss something in open with all of us present than sort of be wondering about it. There are things that probably require a substantial amount of backup, such as when we're establishing the budget, or perhaps considering a new educational initiative, or allocating funds of another sort. And then there are things that are sort of in the middle. And then I'll end by saying, my philosophy of this is to be permissive rather than restrictive, and so I'm more likely to say, yeah, go ahead and put something on, as long as I think it comports with open meetings laws and doesn't violate confidentiality of contract negotiations or personnel, or, you know, other things that we need, or safety is probably the other big thing that sort of falls under that. And so I was going to open that up for discussion. If there is none, we could sort of move on. Any other thoughts?
Maybe this is something that probably we could take up at our...
Meeting on the 22nd?
Meeting on the 22nd, because I do think, like you say, you know, open-ended for us to discuss. I see our meetings as business meetings. We're here to take action or get reports. That workshops are more appropriate for just sort of throwing things out there to discuss, in my opinion. I mean, it's a business meeting. It's, we've come here to, you know, you want to take action on something, or you don't want to take action on something. I do also want to be careful, and again, maybe, that's why I'm saying, maybe it's on the 22nd, that I don't want to micromanage the administration. Sometimes we seem to be the complaint board more than the school board, so...
Is there a difference?
There is a difference. So I guess, you know, those would sort of be my thoughts for the agenda is, and I'm not always sure, and again, maybe that's why I'm saying, but, you know, I'm happy to have it now. I'm not always sure if I'm even being asked to take action, or I'm not being able to take action. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be researching something because there's going to be a vote, or if it's just sort of a, it's going to be a half-hour, high-level, you know, discussion. It's really, it's really sort of, I think, talking about what we think our meeting should and shouldn't, shouldn't be. That's why I'm wondering if that's not more a discussion for the 22nd, but...
It certainly can be.
Happy to throw that out there now, that those are sort of my thoughts.
Okay.
I think, too, that many months back, we had come to an agreement on a standard rotating schedule, and Dr. Sanquiony, you weren't with us, so I fully understand that, but we had agreed to monthly reports from the superintendent, monthly reports from the finance director on the current state affairs of the school department. That's something we haven't seen in months. That's one of the concerns I have, and to Mrs. Palash's point, too, you know, when we get our packages, I'm always ready to dive in and do the research and come up with, okay, I understand the topic at hand. I either have an opinion or I do not. But without anything in backup, it's very difficult to understand where the conversation will lead, and whether or not we will be asked to take a vote on anything.
Okay. Mrs. Black? Mrs. Pavo? No? That certainly, it certainly seems reasonable to sort of discuss it at the meeting on the 22nd, and we'll discuss that meeting in a little bit, too. One of the interesting things about the policy was also was that the backup is supposed to be available, I think, eight days or something prior to the meeting, which I don't see that practically happening.
Do we know if there was a reason for that eight days?
No. I, you know, the policy, if you go back and look through the dates where it was originally written and then amended, I think it was, I want to say it was originally written in the 1970s, and may have been last amended in the 1990s.
Okay, so it's due for a review regardless?
Well, I think, you know, we can sort of see how things go at the, at the meeting on the 22nd. But again, I will, I will, I guess, end the discussion unless there's something else somebody wants to say, in that I will probably continue to be more permissive than restrictive, but will ask people to give us some sense of what they want to say, or, you know, some backup, again, depending on how substantial I think the issue requires it to be. So, yeah. All right. Old Business, 9A, superintendent's goals, school committee retreat scheduled for September 22nd. This was just, again, a reminder that we will be meeting on the 22nd. I think we agreed from 9:00 to 12:00 here. And I asked for some sort of ideas to focus the discussion a little bit. I don't think I've heard from you and you, so if there's something, otherwise, I'm just going to, I think, give everything to Peter and sort of see how he wants to sort of direct our discussion.
Are you looking for agenda ideas, or, we knew this would happen.
I'm looking for darkness.
I'm looking for light.
Someone get up and dance.
Were you looking for agenda ideas or goals?
I think that, so, in my view, and then I'll let Peter speak to it as well, the discussion should be pretty open-ended, and it should both be about setting goals, but also about sort of how, you know, what our working, what the working relationship is between this committee and the superintendent, and the rest of the district as well. And maybe even, you know, getting into things like, you know, how should the agenda be set? What are appropriate things to bring to this committee? And, you know, sort of toward that as well, if I could just jump back to 8A for a minute, or 8B for a minute, you know, yes, I agree, Deb, that this is primarily a business meeting, but it's also an informational meeting. I mean, that's why we have Spotlight on Success and Open Forum and other types of things. So anyway, but, you know, again, how do we want to shape that? And including in that, we could sort of talk about, well, we've had this sort of standard calendar for a year or so, you know, through multiple transitions over the last few months. Maybe it's not been as honored, but, you know, it's another chance to think about that and look at that. All right. We know who's, is it me? Not me. All right. All right. New Business, 10A, approval of Council 94 contract. I'll ask for a motion to approve the Council 94 contract. Is there a second? Just by way of discussion, there is, the contract is posted under negotiation documents on the website, as is the financial impact statement, and the contract, just for members of the public, essentially continues the terms of their prior contract with a 3% increase in raise, or increase in salary. The term of the contract is one year, and results in a cost to the district of approximately $63,000. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Item 10B, approval of data manager contract. Dr. Sanquiony? What is, you know? A charge. Okay. You need a lightning rod? An animal? No, it's not an animal. It's a tiger or a fox. I don't know. It's charged, not an animal. Approval of data manager contract, have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item 10C, the core organization. I believe Mrs. Christ is coming, to Ms. Christ, Gloria, fondly known to all of us.
Gloria Christ, the core organization. I just want to also acknowledge that Pamela Polly is here, our managing director, and we may have some board members here, I don't know. I just kind of always like to recap and give everybody a heads up on our big ideas. So what got us here? Creativity is the side of health. It isn't the thing that drives us mad. It is the capacity in us that tries to save us from madness. This is Jeanette Winterson. Why be happy when you can be normal? So just kind of want to review where we are.
Gloria, can I just interpret for a second? Could you just give us a really five-word view of what CORE, or a description of what CORE is, just for people who may not know?
Yes. CORE is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that is dedicated to consciously transforming through the creative process.
Thank you.
That's the big umbrella. We do a lot of stuff underneath the big umbrella. Yeah. So our 2018, 2019, 2018, 2017, 2018 year was really incredibly success, successful. We added another school district, Portsmouth, with programs at Hathaway and Melville. And our art literacy camp, as always, ran for two weeks. Just want to point out that what that is, is it's our 10th year we've been running this in collaboration with Sherri Al, Susan Cardoza, and this year, it was Bethany St. Pierre, where kids come in in the morning and they get reading, science, math, computer skills, have lunch, play, and then they have performing and creative arts, and we set up a gallery. This year, we were so excited that 95% of our students did both weeks, which is really phenomenal, because we have two separate weeks for a purpose, but these kids wanted to do two weeks back-to-back. And the recycled sculpture contest was, again, successful, thanks to RISCA, the Rhode Island State Council on the Arts. And we partnered with the library, and it ended up with CORE donating a Japanese maple, a state tree, that's now planted on the library grounds. This year, we are piloting a robotics program. I wanted to call it Mr. Roboto, in honor of Queen. Rock on. But we are actually calling it Rockin' Robots, and it's going to pilot at Fort Barton. We're purchasing the software, the Legos, and the computers. And already, there's interest at the middle school, and Mrs. Craven would like to actually take that program and turn it into these students competing across the state. We're all for it. We started Second Saturdays at Born Mill, again, through a grant with RISCA. We were noticing that kids at Born Mill were not participating in after-school arts program because they did not have transportation, so we took our program to them. And for 10 months, kids will have a free Saturday of arts. We kicked off this Saturday with acting. Next week, it's plein air painting outside. They'll have yoga, they'll have sculpting, everything, yeah? And it's really super cool, so we're really happy to be there. We partnered with Staples this fall, and we have given out 250 coupon cards for back-to-school savings for families, teachers, and students. We also have 50 boxes of Crayola crayons, 24 to a box. And this spring, they want to partner with us again. We don't know what that's going to be, but it will be something that's geared towards our teachers and students' families saving money. Currently, we have programs running at all of our Tiverton schools. Registration is open now. Classes begin the week of October 1st. We also are running programs at Hathaway and Melville. We launch at the Little Compton School District this fall, and Portsmouth Middle School and Middletown Schools have asked for proposals. Plans for 2019, the recycled sculpture contest will happen, but we're just changing it up a little bit, and we're going to be creating plastic pets of any kind, animals of any kind. Who am I, anyway? The partnership with the Tiverton Coalition is again back. This theme this year is This is Me. It's also launching at Wilbur and Little Compton. In the winter and spring, we're launching our own theater company. It's called the Youth Theater Company, and it's for grades four through eight, and kids will be, it's based on the model that we run here in the high school. Kids will rehearse, we'll have a show, they audition, and we'll have three performances. We also launched a collaborative this spring, Portraits to Puppets, which will be a collaboration with Mr. Tracy here at the high school, and the Collaborative in Warren. This is going to pair up kindergartners just starting out with Mr. Tracy's senior art students. Phase one, we are asking for in-school time, 2:15 to 2:45, with our kindergartners, who will create a portrait of their inner child, their inner hero, or their inner monster. High school students will work with these kids to create the one-dimensional drawing. In phase two, those designs will then go to artist.
Go away.
Everybody dance! It's impromptu dance moment. Those designs will then go to artists in the collaborative in Warren. Those artists will work with the Tiverton High School students to create a 3D dimension of that one-dimensional portrait. It will either be a puppet or a variety of mixed media. Phase three, the kindergarten student will pair with the artist who helped create their design and brought it to life. The kindergartner will then create a narrative based on what he or she has seen, and all the designs will be displayed at the collaborative gallery in Warren after first being displayed at Tiverton Town Hall. The learning standards is literacy, design, mentoring, one dimension to three dimension, taking an image from the inside, which may or not, may or may not have emotional value, and identifying what changes once the image takes shape. Our second big collaboration is intergenerational stories of time, generating who we are. This will be a collaboration with residents of Brookdale and Tiverton 3rd and 4th graders. Brookdale will work with us to help identify residents who want to participate in telling their life story. This will be based on a series of prompts and questions generated by the 3rd and 4th grade students. CORE will then work with teachers to identify these 3rd and 4th grade students who want to participate. Once the narrative process is complete, both the resident and the student will be photographed in a black-and-white picture, as they are, and then the 3rd and 4th, or 4th grade student will read the story or perform it for family and friends at Brookdale with a coffee and dessert reception. The key learning standards, the art of the story, listening, responding, connecting to an elderly population, understanding the value of how our stories can change and how our own narrative can change. Our big, big, big goals and big dreams for 2019 and 2020 is how can CORE work with teachers to better serve our most vulnerable students, the trauma-informed student. I recently completed a certification in trauma-informed competency this summer, and I'm sure I don't have to tell any of you all, trauma-informed students is unfortunately the norm these days, and it impacts the way that they learn. There is a webinar that CORE is happy to sponsor. I think we briefly discussed this, you've got that brochure on your desk. We would be happy to set up that webinar if there are teachers interested in learning some key points on how to work with trauma-informed students. In school, we are looking at a program I am working on called ACT in Access, Release, Transform. This is, I'll be working with evidence-based neuroscience and disciplines to help reach kids that have learning blocks or creative blocks because of what's going on in their prefrontal cortex, based on what's impacted them, whether it's a small trauma, T-trauma, or big T-trauma. We're going to be looking at mental well-being through arts and education versus partial placement. Can we cut down on district partial placement by adding in-school resources? How can CORE tap into ESA money? ESA money is Every Student Succeeds Act, funds that districts receive all across the state that cover a wide variety of student-based issues. CORE would love to take the lead on generating more arts-based programs to assist in the educational format. Finally, since we do so much for students, we would like to do something for teachers in our district. Amy Donnelly Roach and I were working on this briefly, and it's kind of at a standstill, but I would love to work this back into the mix. CORE will partner with 10th Gate Yoga, that's attached to the bottom of your packet there, to provide a wellness program specifically and only for teachers and administration staff. He's created a format that works in eight-week segments. Portsmouth is already doing this with great success. I know they've been trying to work out a deal with trust. I don't know all the details, but we are working to make this free for the teaching staff. If CORE can make any of this happen, please know that we strive always to make sure that our students are getting what they need to thrive and succeed, and I always think there's an arts component to it, and just always grateful for the support that you all give us. We are growing so quickly. Just want to add that each and every one of our teaching artists always have a current background check. They have to go through an employee process that's on file. I recently dropped off our updated insurance form. CORE has insurance, and I have a counseling and a healthcare insurance. It's on file here in the district. Finally, just want to close with something. The truth is, kids want to be part of the conversation. The truth is, kids are more curious than most adults. The truth is, kids know that lies are bad. Kids learn something new every day. Kids are smarter than you think. Kids can turn any place into a playground, or a stage, or an art room. Kids feel things deeply. Kids expect honesty. Kids appreciate a good story. They appreciate telling one, listening to one, and creating one. Kids, each and every kid, is entitled to the creative experience. If that creative experience can lead to a path of self-discovery or emotional healing, all the better. Do you have any questions about any of this?
Any questions from the committee?
Not necessar, I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily a question. It's more a direction. So I know we're very familiar and very fortunate, all of these after-school things that you've brought to the district, that CORE's brought to the district, has been fantastic, it's been fantastic for the different organizations. I do know that since Dr. Sanquiony is new, he may not be as familiar with it, and just try to work as closely as you can with him and the administration as we move forward, especially where we're starting to bring some stuff in school. Just make sure he and his administrative team are, which you, I know you always do.
Absolutely, yeah.
I know you always work with after-school, so just, just make sure that that partnership has been, it's been strong, it's good, and I know that you do that. Let's just make sure that we all continue to just work together, because there's some exciting stuff here.
Thank you. Yep. I always, Pam, at... Yep, I always, Pam, I'm not checking the gate, Pam's checking the gate. We always let our principals know what's going on days before anything happens. Our registration form is pretty complete. We know which kids need to be a little more safe in the process of picking up. I'm just very honored to do what we do across the board. And really, truly, it started here in Tiverton, and we're just very, very fortunate that we get to do what we love to do and that our students are benefiting from the experience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gloria.
Thank you.
For all the great work you do. And Mrs. Polly, as well, thank you very much. And thanks for trying to do something for our teachers as well. Okay. Item 10D Homeschool Request, have a motion to approve. All those in favor? Item 10E Commissioners Field Memo. Mrs. Black?
Yes. Mrs. Farnworth had brought this up last year, and it's very important. It's a weekly memo, and it's filled with a treasure trove of all the things that are happening in the state. I just don't want our school district, our teachers or our students to miss out on anything. An example would be the, they're having two design competitions this fall. They're going to redesign the ride website, and they're going to design the emblems for the adopted council designations. Remember, when kids graduate now, they're going to get different designations and emblems on their thing. But the thing is, there's always these deadlines, there's, you know, January 4th and then things like that. And I just don't want, someone has to be looking at this. I don't care who it is, but if someone in the district, as Mrs. Farnworth had asked to follow this and make sure that you can nominate kids for so many things, our kids are just as talented as anyone else in the state. And every time I read it, I'm so excited, I'm like, where are we? And we're not there. And then we have the Governor's Workforce Board, which is working so hard.
I think, Mrs. Black, I don't want to interrupt, but I think my request was that we have a standing item on the agenda to kind of go over the most recent
Oh, all right.
Ride highlights, if you will, that came from that memo.
So that would be whatever it is.
And that's probably something we can discuss on the 22nd as well.
Okay, that's good. So I just wanted to make sure that we, we did that. That would be great. Just like Mrs. Polish had put on the student, on the student, on the board, and nothing happened with it, then we just bring it back and we get things done, that's all. Okay? Thank you.
It's going to be a fun-packed morning. Any other discussion? Okay. Yeah. Item 10F Attendance Banner. Mrs. Black?
Yes, I was going to bring the attendance Vienna that Mrs.
Are you on? You may not.
I don't know. I was going to bring the attendance Vienna that Mrs. Pelletier had made for us, and we stood out in front of the schools with it last year and greeted everyone because we know how important that is, because if the kids aren't here, they can't learn. But it's hanging up in the middle school, so I didn't want to bother to ask them to take it down. So it's not here tonight, but that's all that was, because it's attendance month, and we all know how important it is.
So you wanted permission to?
I was just going to bring it and just show everyone.
Oh, okay.
Outside the schools, remember, and then we didn't. So I just wanted to bring it tonight, but I didn't want to take it off the wall of the middle school because it looks so nice there.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for reminding us all of that. All right. Item 11 Announcements, Scheduled Meetings. Anything from anyone?
Just as a reminder, I don't know if this is working. We have the meeting on the 22nd, and
Right.
We also have scheduled a finance subcommittee meeting on the 24th.
Okay. It's on Monday?
Yes.
Anything else from anyone else? Well, if that's... Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.